Okay, so let's call it order. Confirm future meeting dates. October 27th, the Saturday is our retreat. November 7th, in November 20... Oh, you'll meet again the 23rd and the 25th if necessary. Bob has said... What did he say? The first thing he said was? One night. Who do you think he thinks?
He thinks one night?
He said one night. I don't know how much he believes it.
Oh.
He said one night. I don't believe it.
I think two.
I think two. I think one for all planning and then one for the rest. Okay. Discussion friendly amendment to Article 12. Plastic band.
May I, Mr. Chair? Can we make November the 14th and 28th back for that, those dates?
Okay.
For some reason, I thought the chair wasn't available on the 14th. He brought up a good point that the 21st is the night before Thanksgiving. So, the November dates would be the second and fourth Wednesday.
All right, hold on. The 14th, I just realized. I didn't know what it was until I found it today. But, if the seventh doesn't work... 28th is fine. If the seventh doesn't work, could we meet at 6:00 on the 14th?
It's fine with me.
We don't have to decide tonight. We can decide. But if the 20th... If the other one works first, that'll be fine. If not, maybe 6:00. Okay. Are we going on in three?
Yeah.
Discussion. Okay. So, I didn't even get to read the most recent. I did call Brian Kelly, who was the proponent, and filled him in on the information we received from town council relative to charging by a community, which they were fine with, I believe, what he may have sent. Did anyone read? Did you... Anyone get to read it? What he...
I think he changed it to recommend... He wants the article to recommend the 20 cent... 20 cent charge as opposed to mandating it.
To recommend it? Can we even do it? I don't think we...
John's email.
John's email, pretty... To me, it's pretty black and white. I don't think...
Is that another email today? Not recommending that?
Yeah. Not recommending that. I agree. I think that case... Is it Williamson was...
Yeah.
Was pretty clear. So, I saw Michael at 4:00 and I said to him, I think, we'd be all right with the thickness on the plastic, but nothing on the money. And I didn't even know that was what he had... What I said to him is, you can tell me if you think I'm wrong. There's nothing to prohibit him as a vendor from passing this on to his consumers. Does any other... Anything else he sells? And the goal in looking at the places where, especially in Europe and the Middle East where it's been implemented, Israel where it's been... And worked is, the goal is to use the money to change the behavior so that people don't use plastic bags anymore. Hopefully, whether he chooses to do it or not, that we're able to change the behavior.
And there... I mean, the Solid Waste Advisory Committee has talked about making sure that we get reusable bags out to people. So, the town wants to help with that as well. I mean, not that that would be part of this, but...
I remember our conversation with Hillary. You were there, Katie. Was it Matt? Who was the city council?
Matt O'Malley.
Matt O'Malley. When he talked about that in Boston, almost everybody's trying to... He said even like political things, instead of giving out pens and they're giving out reusable bags to seniors and things. It's making it an incentive so people have them, make them amenable.
That's what really the administration... I mean, that's really what the six-month period...
It's 12, Kate.
Right. We'd give people time to prepare and...
It's 12 months. And is it 12 months from when the AG rules that it's okay? Or is it 12 months, do you think, from when we...
Well, it's... So, on page 62, it's six months following approval with bylaw by the AG or July 1st, 2019, whichever is later. So, depending on how quickly you get this into the AG, the AG could act sooner. So, it's likely that July 1st would be the outside date. So, that gives us a period of time to...
To work on it.
To work on an educational campaign, getting out the word to people as to what they should expect from the stores. And it hopefully gives the stores time to plan for this.
Right. And even more... I mean, it's more than six months, really, because we have the time that it gets passed to do preparations and then to get things rolling, so...
Richard, on the point about the thickness, I know that the Food Center is looking for 2.25 mils.
Yeah. You want three? You tell...
Well, there's a lot of... I mean, they're kind of all over the map, but even... I was just pulling up Boston. Even Boston is at three mils.
Yes.
A lot of the other communities are... We have four... We're at four mils, but a lot of communities are at three or 2.5. I don't... At least in the research Hillary gave us, I didn't see any at two and a quarter.
I think I said three to him. And that's what you and I talked about. I think I said three to Michael.
Boston's three, right?
Boston's three.
Yeah. I said the same as Boston. I said three.
What he had pointed out in his letter was California precedents for 2.25. So... But I don't know that there's any in Massachusetts, so...
I just... Did anyone get the email today? Did Jay Fundling email anyone else besides me?
Yes.
So, was his concern that it's not going to get passed and get put off? That's what he wrote to me. His concern is that...
That's right.
That it's going to get bottled. And I said, no. I said, I think we can get there. I said, it may not be exactly as the original article. There may be a couple change. I said, I think the money will be gone. I didn't get into the details. But I said, I think it will pass. I think if we can all live with three, I think we could get it done. And I think Michael would live with it.
Live with that.
I think three is a reasonable compromise.
I do, too. So, it's... I'll just write this down.
No, of course, the Warren Community's recommendation, so we'll have to...
Grab that.
See where they're at.
What was the proposal in the current article?
That's what I'm working on, huh?
It was four. Okay. So, yeah, that's a good compromise.
And Boston's band goes into effect sometime in December. A lot of residents of Milton that...
True.
Will be aware.
They're going to be aware of it, especially everybody that uses... Especially the place with low mils, Stop &amp; Shop on Truman High, all those people are going to... I'm just trying to see where it is in here. Hundred percent we... I could... Just want to mark it.
Anywhere in the pipeline in Quincy?
No. You know something? And I was with Mayor Koch and I should have... On Saturday, I should have said something to him. Chelsea... Cambridge already done. Cambridge is...
20 cents.
Yeah, they're charging.
10 cents.
But John had mentioned in the prep meeting, this is the first time I've heard, there's a difference between cities and towns in the leeway that cities can have in fees that they can impose that a town necessarily cannot.
Yes.
Well, thank you.
I just looked at Cambridge. There are three mils also.
Yeah. So, they'll put us the same as Boston, Cambridge. Should I let... So, I'll let George know. George isn't here. Is George here?
They're meeting as well.
It's seven, I think.
Is George here, though? Did someone say George was not here? I was just away the other day.
He was just away Thursday.
All right.
We saw him Friday.
All right. Okay. I'll let John know. I'll let George know. And should I let Bob? And I'll let Mike McNosa and Brian Kelly. No money, no recommendation, and we would support three mil. All good?
Yes.
Okay. Item four, before I go on to five. Is there any of the other town meeting articles? I don't think we're going to get to anything. I think tonight's going to be all planning board.
Just in case we got to 15, though. It was at the meeting we had on Thursday, there was an edit.
Hold on, let me get to 15.
I think it's CFO.
You want to give them that? Did you already do it? Did you already?
So, if you look in the warrants...
I already wrote it in. Go ahead.
It's... We're removing attached position specifications.
This is on page 67. On page 67 at the top.
Fifth line down. Fourth line. Starts on the fourth line down. See attached position specifications. There was discussion about that being stricken from the recommendation. As it's preliminary, we'd have to go through the personnel board additionally. So, it's not... It was just something to hold in the book as a kind of a what's out there, but not necessarily what the position will be, because ultimately, the personnel board still has that authority.
So, then my only... My only other thought is that everyone got the email from Jim from... So, my only other thought is, and listening to some of the thoughts that were articulated on Friday at the meeting, is that if we have to compromise on this, perhaps we look at where we have the ability to actually set the date, because it's going to require a referendum vote of the town. We set that date. We decide what goes on there. If we have to push it out of here, just the vote, not the town meeting action. If we... In other words, if...
This board has the right to set the date.
To set the date right for the referendum.
It doesn't require... It doesn't say the next election. It just says an annual...
Right.
An annual, yeah. And John said that. John agreed with me when he said, you can set what election it is. And we were talking about someone's livelihood and clearly, I think Jim has concerns about himself personally, and I think there'll be those who'll support him. I appreciate what we're trying to do here for the future of the town, but I just... I can see that at the expense of one person's livelihood, this could become a mountain for us to climb in on Town 84. Just so this... Just my thought is that, and we may do that... We may have to do that side thing, but I'm... That is a way we could deal with this.
Yeah. John specified the language being ambiguous.
Right.
Didn't say that it had to go on the April 26th ballot, whatever that date is.
And just so we all know when we're in the room, depending on what the dialogue or what the discussion is, that we do have that right to set the date of when the actual vote would be taken. It doesn't necessarily have to be this year. Go ahead.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead. I missed...
I know. So, I... I... Let me see if I understand. That would allow us to really give the personnel board time to be thoughtful about constructing the CFO position and in a way that is thoughtful about the actual statutory responsibilities that are prescribed to the treasurer. So, is that what I'm understanding? That would be helpful? Because my understanding from... I was not at that meeting, but my understanding from watching the footage and from reading this is that the treasurer position isn't going anywhere.
No.
And then... Right. And then... Yeah. Okay.
Were required by statute to have a treasurer.
Right. And I don't really see how the CFO could do the treasurer's job and the CFO job anyway. I think it's a really important position to have.
Well, mine was just, so we don't really have to... We're not talking about a friendly amendment or anything. We're just talking about the vote.
No.
This... It really won't affect the vote on this. It's just a matter of, we've decided if you could date when to... What election to schedule it? Or are you looking to say something at this time about a date?
No. So, I'm... Depending on how the debate goes, and I do think I'm getting the feeling, and I appreciate this, because we're talking about an elected official livelihood. And I think he feels some pressure here that once this... Or if this does pass, that even though the treasurer becomes an elected official, the answer will... To the CFO, correct? Answer will to the CFO.
Appoint it, yeah.
Appoint it, yeah.
Appoint it to the town administrator.
Appoint it to the town administrator. I'm sorry. Appoint it to the town administrator. All right. And... But answering to the CFO, that it would be a... In a way, spelling the... His way to exit, you know, his way to... So, I don't... I just want us to know that that is if we have to... If it gets to the point that it's going to lose based on just the humane... The human aspect of this. The fact that we have an elected official who's not only against it, but who people, including myself, think very highly of, that maybe we get this passed and somehow negotiate that we schedule once we know he's going to be leaving. That's just my own thought, but just...
In addition, you know, to Melinda's point, there may be a rationale there for a longer transition. I think that's what, you know...
That's what I'm...
It seemed like where you're driving at, whether there's the need for a longer transition. And so, that would be a rationale over and above what you pointed out, Richard, that, you know, rather than... Because if this needs to be on the ballot in April, then it pretty much needs to be baked by, you know, by May.
Right.
You know? And that might, you know, with this restructuring, that might be... That's aggressive.
Too soon.
Might be aggressive, so...
It's like it's a V lane, so, you know, like we're on the high-speed lane.
Right. And I just wonder how that would work anyway, because we would be bound to... Because the treasurer, is it an annual election? Yes, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, we'd be bound to have that election in April, and that... Whoever wins, that person's term will be a year. So, it's not clear to me that we could switch it, that we could take that person out of office.
Yeah. In fact, a lot of...
No, we're not bound... That's what I'm trying to say. We're not bound to do it this April. What this article allows us to do is to schedule it whenever... At our pleasure.
Right. But even if we had the referendum that had passed, I don't... I don't think that we could take someone out of office. I think that we would...
No, but I think he worries about that. I get that.
He definitely worries about it.
He definitely worries about it. I get that.
Oh, no. I understand the worry, but I'm just trying to figure out legally what we're... You know, because that's important.
The only thing is, and I mean, if I understand this merit of what you're saying...
I get that.
I'm just thinking of the argument that the town government study committee made when they came in, when they said that we've had this position vacant.
Right.
I think their view was that it wouldn't make sense to hire a CFO unless you knew that the treasurer would be appointed, would be reporting to CFO.
Right.
So, really, so if the election would be delayed a year, then it almost delays hiring a CFO. Or even starting the search for CFO.
That's true.
Which I think would... Well, I think that would impact a financial expectations of the town administrator's planning already, but I'm not trying to speak for him. I know there was a point that they raised when they came in, that they don't think it makes sense to even hire the CFO if we don't know where the voters are going to be.
Right. The idea is that the treasurer would work... Would answer to the CFO.
Yes.
And work up to the CFO. And then their notion with putting it on the ballot at the same time as the treasurer running for reelection is that they then have a year to search and find someone.
Right.
So, that in the following, in April of 2020, you have a candidate to appoint.
And the expectation was also...
You have a treasurer to appoint, and you have a CFO to appoint.
Yeah. And both... Again, I'm not trying to speak for the town administrator, because you're the appointing authority, but I think at the meeting, it was pretty big, pretty clear, you would be willing to... You were expecting to keep...
Correct. Right, right. He's stolen it.
And we can do that. We don't have to advertise out...
No.
Okay.
I don't think so.
Yeah. So, and that was my understanding, was that he would be... He would be appointed. So, he'd have a year that he was elected, probably. I mean, I expect that. And then appointed and...
So, the last reason that I bring it up is the last thing that John reminded me of on Friday was, he said, this can be tough. He said it to me three times.
Yeah.
Three times.
Does the town government study committee... Have you talked to them?
I've talked to Rick. I haven't told him this, because this just happened Friday. This was a... I talked to him Thursday night. I talked... Because Rick's going to speak, and then Leroy's going to speak. It's all approved with Bob. He's going to give them each, I think, five minutes to speak to it. But I just... I could tell there was a little... John was being attentive to detail stuff tonight when I was... We were there Friday. So, I just made note of that. And then, and I was actually took, you know, made a place back when he said to me, listen, just so you know, you got it, meaning us, we set when an election would take place. So, I said, okay. So, I felt that it's important to share with everyone here, so that if we're sitting in there tonight, depending on what we're faced with, that we know that.
Is it something we should talk to them about before we...
I'll be glad to do that. I say that to Rick. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. And I think that it just requires a lot of very good communication about the actual steps and what will happen and the timing for people to understand.
Yeah. The only thing I'll add is the Warren Committee wrestled with why this wasn't two articles.
Yeah, that got brought up Friday, too.
Make the treasurer appointed versus elected. Warren Committee convinced me that it needs to be one article, because you have to do... You have to do them simultaneously in order to search for the CFO. You have to make sure that the treasurer is appointed and can be the appointee, report up to the CFO. So, it made sense to me that it becomes one article and not two separate articles, because then you'd have that year of limbo where the treasurer is appointed but not working directly with the CFO.
Okay. On... So, are we good on that? Just so everyone's got that. So, on two other of our articles, one being select board, the other being the trash... Not the trash. The plastic bags. I've had a long weekend. My head is sp... I knew today, I'm like, this is...
Plastic bags.
Yeah, plastic bags. I'm going... You're going to speak... I'm not going to even speak to it. You can speak to it.
I'm happy to speak to it. And Bob, you know, I sent Richard...
I don't even think you need the PowerPoint.
The PowerPoint. Yeah. But, you know, I'm going to go through it quickly. It's similar to the... It's substantially the same as the one that I presented to you all. And I made clear to Bob that I wasn't speaking on behalf of the board in presenting that.
So, he... The reason I'm saying this is because he said to me, well, do you want to speak to it, too? And I'm like, okay. If Michael's going to speak, I don't have to speak as well. I just don't have to, so...
So, I think the board may want to decide whether it wants to delegate me to speak on behalf of the board or not. It doesn't... It's up to the board.
We can wait till tomorrow, because I don't see us getting to that time.
Yeah. That's fine. That's fine.
So, we'll come to that tomorrow night.
Yeah.
And the same with... I mean, you've done all the work on the recycle and all the trash stuff. I know you always believed the chair should speak.
I'm telling you, you speak into it.
But I'm like, you did all the work. I just...
No. We've all done the work on it. The good news is that Sustainable Milton is going to speak to it. So, that... Laurie McIntosh is going to speak for them.
There's a handout on the table.
So, will you do me one favor?
Yes.
I'll go to... I'll speak with Rick. I'll speak with George. And if you could grab her on where we're at, just on the compromise and the... Just so that everybody knows. So, I'll get Kelly, McNosa, Rick, and I'll talk to George. And we can come back to that tomorrow night. All right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just one more thing about the town sponsored. Chief Grant's father-in-law passed away.
So, he will not be here.
He will not be here tonight. So, it has to be spoken to. He had asked that you...
I don't think we're going to get to that. On the... I met with Brian today. And so, and then tomorrow, I want to talk about this thing next Monday before we... Just a little bit. We don't have to do it tonight. I met with Brian again today for now.
You mean the Town Center Neighborhood Association?
Yes.
Yes. Because I didn't know. If you don't need me to go, that's fine. I have plenty of work to do.
I don't think... I will go, but I think the person they need to hear right... We don't have anything before us. The person they need to hear from is Brian. And he's more than willing. I spent an hour and a half of this morning. So... Okay. Any other town meeting articles we need to touch on? If you hold any breath, go ahead.
We haven't really... We haven't voted positions on the planning board articles, but there have been questions. I've gotten a few from people. And I've had a question myself about the term of the planning board, which is Article[1366.52] We haven't really, we haven't voted positions on the planning board articles, but there have been questions. I've gotten a few from people, and I've had a question myself about the term of the planning board, which is Article 8.
Yes.
And, and I'm, the town administrator and I talked about this on Friday, Thursday, Friday. I had a question. I know that at the time, and the answer probably hasn't changed, but apparently town council doesn't think, vote, a vote of recommend.
He didn't, no, he didn't. He said this, you can, the law allows any community to go either way, three or five. He said, I think in our case, we used to have three and we went to five. He didn't give us the year, but he, he did say that in the room.
And then he, someone tried to relate the board's selectment going from three to five and a referendum necessary for that. He said that was a special act.
Yeah.
And this doesn't, this doesn't.
Require that, that doesn't apply.
Require that because there's the ability to be three or five-year terms.
If Cheryl speaks to this and says what she said the other day, she really made a very strong point in just how she believes, several of them believe, that it discourages people who are really qualified from running for the planning board because it's such a, it's a five-year commitment. And if you run for reelection, it's a ten-year commitment. The only hiccup in this would be though, Katie, is that how they're gonna get, like how we did it, how we got from three to five, you know, two, one, two, and three. How that, John brought that up, how that will apply.
Yeah, how the elections will work.
How the elections will work. And Sue Galvin had to think about it, but how that was gonna work, whether they're all on fives and then they're gonna go to threes.
It's not spelled out in here.
It's not, because it wasn't, it was brought up at the prep meeting and that was where, and there was no real definitive answer to it either.
Right, I think they weren't ready to speak to that. They just presented the article this way, just to see if they could go from five to three.
The, the reason I brought it up is because the moderator term changed a few years ago.
Right.
And we had to go for a vote of recommendation on that one. But I guess it's because the state law allows planning boards to have three or five-year terms. Okay.
A planning board's the only thing that do have five-year terms? Other than like state, like DAs and, the DA's are six.
Our cemetery trustees have.
They're five as well?
Yeah. I've heard from people who have, who have those wrong arguments are keeping it at five, so it's gonna be interesting to hear the debate.
I know.
I won't mind it on this one at this point.
Okay. Any of the other planning board articles? I'm trying to think about.
Um, the side, the side yard one, Joe Prandak said, you know, that this really was brought up by, by one, one resident.
Yeah.
Really talks about corners and the, the language when I read it originally wasn't clear to me, so I'll be interested to hear how other people are interpreting this.
So I asked her to bring, we both did. We asked her to bring the slides. So she has, there are actual locations in town, but in, for the purpose of the slides and the discussion, there, you won't know who they are. They don't, there's not the streets, so like any town street, main street.
Don't call it main street.
Yeah, they call, they gave it fictitious names that don't even exist. But to me, in seeing how she depicts it with the slides, I think for the average town meeting member, it's gonna be much easier to understand.
Well, I think people are worried that it's like, okay, it's winter, there, it's snowing, I'm gonna pull my car off onto the side where it's not paved, can I do that? I think that's what some people are worried, they won't be able to do that, you know, so that the plow can do the driveway and they can park back in their driveway or something.
And it's actually, I think in her description, right, it's not something that's gonna happen that often. That was how she felt.
It's not something that goes to the ZB.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's not like a, it's not gonna become a regular thing that you're gonna see all the time. But she, I, I was, I didn't understand it at all, but once she described it and had the slides, I'm like, okay, now I get it. It's like, I see what you're trying to do here. I think, I think she'll be fine on being able to articulate that one.
The thirty percent is not a change, I don't think, as I understand it. Thirty percent of the setback.
Of the setback?
No, I didn't think so.
Thirty, page thirty.
Alright.
I don't think that's a change. I, I could be wrong, but I guess we'll, I guess we'll find out, but I don't think that's a change.
Was, um.
I, you know, full disclosure, I actually have a corner lot and I did just recently expand my driveway, and I had to be within the thirty percent.
Did you really?
And I have.
So I'm getting his permit.
And, yeah, got my permit and I have a corner lot, but I didn't know if this, this, this meant corner, where the driveway is on the corner or the, or the lot is on the corner, but it doesn't really matter because.
Are you gonna see it tonight?
Yeah.
It's very clear when you look at it.
We talked about where the address is.
Now, what about, what about Alex Whiteside's point? Cheryl was saying that it was a good point. Does that mean they're going to be?
Which part, which point, which one?
He was talking about residency district?
We did that. We made those changes.
Oh, okay, those are the, those got made and I just didn't catch it, okay.
We made those changes on Friday. She, actually, that was at her suggestion.
Right, cuz she said that.
Is it gonna be a sheet?
Yeah, the yellow packets are the change, yeah, so the yellow packets are all the change.
Alright, as long as that got changed.
Great.
Great.
I thought they, I didn't think we'd have them in here. I thought they'd be in there, but like, but all, those changes all got done.
Okay.
He's quite productive.
Why do we have the plastic bag being in here? Article twelve.
Is that, is that his friendly? Is that what he wrote, his friendly?
No. There was a typo on there.
Oh, there was a typo. Anything that had a typo got changed.
Oh.
Yeah, the typo got changed. There were a few. Actually, let me go back. I can, I can probably find it cuz I made notes, I made, I made notes on them all.
John gave us a nice cheat sheet as to why. Page. Sixty-three, four, five. Please insert a comma on page sixty-three between below and above. Recommendation for Article twelve, first paragraph, third line, insert the comma between below and above. So in order to do that, we reprinted the whole recommendation. Uh, there, there were five, and that's what's embedded in, in this.
Oh, I see him. Where is? Do you have Brian's most recent? Do either, I printed a copy of Brian Kelly's most recent.
Um, here.
Yeah, but you need it, only cuz I wanna, when I give it to him, I wanna X the sound, I wanna tell him.
I can make copies right now?
Well, the thing is though, like, he gave us. Isn't this, aren't these exactly the same, only this one he highlighted?
Oh, you have, you have an extra?
Yeah, Jones. So you can, you can just have that. I'll remember. So, yeah.
Three mil.
Basically punctuation that makes a difference. Tony?
Let me take this out. So under this, on a new additional language, C and D would both be negated, right? The town meld recommends retail, blah, 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 blah. And any charge for check-up bags shall be sub- stayed on receipt. He can do whatever he wants. We don't care what he does. So this is all deleted.
Right, I think his issue was that.
Right, so this all goes?
Yeah, that all goes.
Three mil on three mil.
Right.
Okay. I would do that. Anything else, Katie? Got anything else on, on?
I don't even know.
I mean, they spent a lot of time on Friday making all these changes. It was, it was the most of the work. Okay. So item five. We need, I need, we need a motion to approve the state election warrant for November, for Tuesday, November sixth, twenty eighteen, this proposed, a proposed motion before us, I'm sorry. Get someone to make that motion.
Uh, I move, I move to approve and sign, sign the state election warrant, dated November sixth, twenty eighteen, with the signature page.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
So it's currently at the printer or waiting for the signature page, and it'll be in rooms October twenty-nine?
Item six. There's a discussion approval with our MPeg director, executive director. Who's speaking? Any, no, no one has to speak. We're just gonna, um, I thought, cuz you were here, I'm like, a little. Which is approval on their contract. We have a motion to vote on the approval of the new MPeg contract, which we've all had now for more of a week. Can you go?
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chairman, um, uh, I, I would ask that we defer this until we have the Comcast contract finalized because this requires a payment of a percentage of the amounts that we receive from Comcast. We think we're gonna get the five percent from Comcast, but it's not, it's not etched in stone. The contracts haven't been drafted, they haven't been signed, so, so, so given the fact that this is conditional on the amount that we get from Comcast and there is, um, in, the new proposed deal, the capital amount, we may wanna deal with the capital amount in here as well. So, so given that, I, I, I'd feel more comfortable if we, if we, if we get the Comcast done. And we've been told that we can expect drafts, I think this week.
Tomorrow or Thursday.
Of the contract, so, uh, with apologies to the MPeg board.
So the one issue though, aren't we only good to extend through tonight?
Can we vote to extend through the next meeting or, you know?
Let's extend. Let's extend through October. Let's go to November, what's our next meeting?
Fourteenth.
Let's go to the fourteenth. Let's extend to the fourteenth and then we can deal with it then.
Okay. That should hopefully give us enough time.
You're not answering me.
Uh, I mean, I'd prefer a longer extension. Um, the Comcast funding will stop December first if the contract's not signed, just FYI.
Right.
But, um, we really need to have, uh, more than a month ex, you know, I got insurance knows I have to deal with this.
Alright, so I'm, I'm.
I think they're coming up, so I'd prefer at least a six-month extension, I mean.
I'll go to the thirty-first, let's go to, I'll go to the thirty-first of the year and then we're, look at it then. How's that, December thirty-first?
I mean, it, even if we, but if we extended six months, that doesn't, that doesn't preclude us from.
Signing a new deal?
Calling this a renegotiation, right?
And if that, if that's negotiating part, that, you know, you can't sign your pay contract cuz we don't have the Comcast contract signed, if that helps speed up the negotiations? I don't know if that helps, then we do a shorter extension, but.
Um, so, uh, so I think Melinda's right, you know, we, we, we can depend, regardless of how long we, we extend, we could, we could sign a new deal before that.
Comcast deal or MPeg deal?
Both, but really MPeg, really, that's what, um, so, um, I mean, we're, we're gonna do our best to get that Comcast deal done as quickly as possible, as soon as we get the papers from them. You know, I, I'm, I'm really agnostic on this, you know, Mike, if you want it, if you wanna have it six months and, and, and once we get Comcast and we sign the new deal, that's fine. If you wanna make it shorter, I don't think it'll have that much effect. I don't think it'll make the Comcast deal go faster if we have a shorter extension, frankly. I, I don't really see that, so.
Cuz you think you're beyond that, you think you're like.
Yeah, I think so. I think so. I think we're, I think we are. I think, I don't think that's gonna be a, any kind of a factor in it, so I'm really agnostic on it. I mean, we could do it shorter, we could do it longer. Just as, my, my view is just, we do need to get Comcast in place before we sign up to what we give MPeg, right?
I'll call whatever you, I mean, I'm thinking minimum to December thirty-first, but I can go longer if you want.
Do you wanna do December thirty-first? Okay.
You can, you can, that's okay? So.
Okay.
Wanna, I'm gonna make a motion then to extend till twelve thirty-one of eighteen?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So that's gonna go, okay, so that's six. Item seven. So the motion approval, one-day liquor licenses for the Milton Club at one ninety-three Central Ave, Milton for October twenty-seventh, for Milton Rowing Crew fundraiser.
I think we refuse.
Alright, okay. Just, just from, just from, um. Are they here for this? I see Terry Zelt and Frank Schropf. Are they here?
No, I think they have, I think they have time. They didn't manage to speak. I know.
There wasn't that.
Terry and Frank with you.
They were here as well?
Yeah. Yeah. Forty, good.
Is everyone there one day? Are they here for their one day?
No.
Are they have something else?
Go on to the one days first.
I will do the one days.
Yourself and then we'll jump back.
Alright, so let me do the one days and then we'll jump. Take a seat down, just grabbing that. Okay. So can I have a motion to approve one-day liquor licenses for the Milton Club at one ninety-three Central Ave for October twenty-seven, twenty eighteen? And for the Milton Rowing Crew fundraiser for the Milton Club for October twenty-eight, twenty eighteen? And for the Moore family christening for November eleventh, twenty eighteen, for the Harland family wedding shower.
Second, or some of them?
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And just, just a side note, I'm sure, is everyone seeing the, the email from our special services, Joe Prandak, relative to operating under existing, and I'll come back to that when they're there, but, okay, as long as everybody's got that, okay, we're done. You scared when I see, I'm like, what? Okay. Number eight, approval acceptance of two donations to M S A P C, Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition. Um, there's two in the amounts of one hundred and two hundred and fifty dollars if I could have a motion to, to accept this.
I'll move to accept a one hundred dollar donation from Milton resident Steve Keel, retired public health manager and currently serving on the steering committee of M S A P C. An acceptance of a two hundred and fifty dollar donation from the Massachusetts Convention Center Authority, both to be entrusted to Milton, to the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition.
Second.
Any questions? Discussion?
Just thank you very much to Steve Keel. He's, I know he works in this field and he cures a lot of the issues, so. That's very generous of him.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Item nine, recognition of an Eagle Scout. We have a motion here for the board to sign a letter of recognition to Austin Wright, who's being awarded his Eagle Scout on November fourth, twenty eighteen, at his Eagles Court of Honor. Do we have a motion there on that?
I'm gonna make proven sign a letter of recognition for Austin Wright, who's being awarded Eagle Scout on November fourth, two thousand and eighteen, at the Court of Honor.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And should we follow up with a letter of, okay, thank you. Item ten, we have a discussion scheduled on the Milton Club with attorney Ned Corcoran and the proprietor, Mr. Peter Kelly, who turned us here.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, Ned Corcoran, attorney representing Milton Club, joined by Peter Kelly and Terry Driscoll and Frank Schropf are here as well. We just thought, we're six months post granting of the special permit, which Peter is preparing to operate under his, sort of operating currently, pre-existing basis as a continuation of a club. And I know that they've been great in granting one-day liquor license for different events that are coming at the club. But we had an issue that sort of popped up the other day that sort of highlighted some ongoing angst, I suppose, with Peter's operation and it, and it cau- caused me to think about maybe just coming before the board and taking, you know, at least updating you where things are from our perspective and taking a little bit of a temperature check, perhaps, anything that you've heard, concerns that you may have about things, the way that the club is being operated. You know, we were before you, the night before, the, the public hearing on the application for the special permit, and it was your first meeting as a, as a new board. So understandably, would have been difficult for you to have taken a lot of testimony and made just public decisions about how you wanna be as a board. But we did want to go forward on that tonight. It was a somewhat contentious hearing and the board determined that they would grant a special permit. Peter's now operated five events and from what we can tell, they've gone well. He's expanded the parking on the property, so it's really addressing on-site parking issues. For the most part, he's had police details present to assist in managing parking and from what we can tell, things are going pretty well. As you know, um, one of the things that Peter did was volunteer to make the prop, the club available six times a year for Milton-based nonprofits and others. And this weekend, the, the, the Milton Crew Team is taking advantage of one of those opportunities, and they have secured a band. Usually, most of the functions are with DJs, but they've got a band. And we know that there was some email traffic that came into Town Hall and, and others about, well, what's this band? And Peter got concerned and we got concerned and we thought, you know, maybe we wanted to call that off. I talked to Terry Driscoll directly about that. Um, we had several conversations around, I know, you know, I talked to Chairman Wells about it and the general consensus coming back, and they always say, you're not doing anything wrong, you've been doing everything right, this is something that you're allowed to do, manage it well, and go forward. And so we made a decision to go forward this night. We've, we've asked the, um, the crew team to think about cutting the hours of the band back from, rather than seven to eleven. Say the band would play till ten, uh, and then that would allow things to sort of drift out a little sooner relative to the type of, of the crowd you might expect to get, um, with that type of entertainment. And so I know that we appreciate the fact that the crew team agreed to do that. But I just thought now is a good time, sort of, these are some of the issues that we're trying to address, we're trying to pay very careful attention to the way that Peter operates within the neighborhood. And to take, again, as I said, a temperature check and ask Terry and or Frank to speak, um, on their, on their behalf about the event that's coming on Friday and, you know, how they would help us manage, um, under the, you know, manage the club as we go forward, so, thank you.
So I did not know. I mean, I followed this pretty closely. And so when, when this first came out, I thought that you were already, because you had been issued the special permit, you were operating under the special permit. But then looking at the special permit and having additional correspondence with the building inspector, Joe Prandak, to quote our town administrator, you have not yet touched the wall yet on the special permit because there are certain things that have to take place, or if they take place, that's when it kicks in. Given that, you're working in a, if I go wrong, you're pre-existing non-conforming, which is what the Who's a Club operated on.
Correct.
Given that, on top of, and it appears from what's been corresponded to us from the building inspectors, who, and to Joe's credit, is a very conservative individual in the way he applies the law and, and does his duty, he feels that everything you've done so far is conforming. Second to that, the part that I'm, at least for me personally, and then I'm gonna hand this over to my colleagues, is that under one thirty-eight, what is your legal and what can, and under one thirty-eight, Chief King not only can voice any additional things, he's one of the signatories on the, on the one day, as well as our approval requires his approval, and he's had no issues. So, and the last thing is, I'm very cognizant that the neighbors have had some angst on this, but I've seen nothing, I've heard nothing different other than that you've been trying to do your due diligence on that, and I, I understand that. But more importantly, that everything that you're doing, both within the bylaws of our ordinances and under chapter one thirty-eight, would, you know, you're in terra firma, as they say, you know, you're standing on firm ground, so. And the other thing too is, I think everything we've seen that has come before us has been a local, either a resident or a, you know, a local nonprofit or a group. And I think that in the discussions we had before Mr. Kelly ever bought the building, was that it was a jewel in this community and we were hoping that it would try to remain here. I never expected that it would, but now it hasn't, so, um, to that aspect of it, it appears you are, you have been living within everything that you said you would do. And so that's how you open the floor to my colleagues, but any questions or concerns? Michael, Tony? Anything?
Can you, can you, um, just share with us in a little bit more detail then, the specifics of what popped up that was, that was driving this whole thing? Did it have something to do with the number of tickets being sold versus number of attendings?
Yeah, I think.
Not the actual, uh, uh.
I think the band was the big thing.
Okay.
That seemed to be the concern.
Okay.
And that it would be open to the public and.
Yeah, Peter made the, as he's been doing, he's made it available for, uh, a town nonprofit to operate and then, subject to making sure that he's operating with the broad limitations that he's got, you know, there's more than a hundred, he's anticipating more than a hundred patients, he's gotta have police detail and like that, he's been careful, but it's really the, the crew team then to say, alright, this is what we're gonna do, this is how we're gonna do it. And I think there was some signs around town that advertised the band.
Mm-hmm.
And then the emails came in, uh, to, to Town Hall.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, copied to, I think to, you know.
I think the concern is that returning to a dance club, and that came up at the previous meetings, and that's not going to happen. This is a band that the.
It's a local band. It's, and it's a loc, it's a Milton band. It's a local band. It's a Milton band. And for as long as I can remember, thirty-something years on the police department, bands at weddings, bands at events, band have been part of what had taken place there.
Yeah, we've had three DJs there in this last couple of weeks and the sound has been very, very minimal. And we've had sound testings and you can't hear in the driveway even, but the band's kinda concerned me and I was going to cancel. But we caught it through and, uh, we're going forward and knock it off at ten o'clock.
I think that's more than reasonable.
I would agree. You go after them and make that decision.
Yeah. And Terry was, uh, okay with that.
Yeah, so, just briefly on the band too, it is a Milton band. He was, is a resident of Milton. Uh, he's involved in businesses in Milton, so we've spoken to him and he's willing to do whatever needs to be done, you know, make this work for everybody.
It's Mark Moore's, right?
Yes, Mark Moore's, yeah. He's played at weddings for many people in Milton, I mentioned a few people, and they're like, oh my gosh, that's great, you know, played at my wedding, played at my sister's wedding, so I think it's, uh, it's good for the town.
I agree.
You know, there was a, when they, when the planning, when the board of field was deliberating a decision, you know, John Leonard as the chair went first, which is unusual, but he, when he has a strong opinion about something, he would generally go first and then he'll, around the other turn. Kathy O'Donnell seconded, and Ginny King went third, and Ginny said, you know, I grew up across the street from the junior women's club. People used to park, sorry, is where we'd let weddings and people would park in front of our driveway, they'd block our access to the driveway. And then there would be, you know, they didn't have air conditioning, so the windows would be open and we could hear all day. She said it was awful and then I could just see the, the hammer coming down. And then she said, but then they tore it down. And she said, this should never happen again. This was a wonderful place and this is an opportunity to preserve something like that. And flipped the, the whole tenor of the meeting. And she said that, and, and what I had said at the meeting that night, and I've said other times, it, from what I've seen, this is a, a labor of love for Peter. Peter bought this property for the sake of preserving this club and operating it as an asset for the town. And I think everything he's been doing, his, his approach to it, has been consistent with that, um, with that desire. Um, and so, you know, we just thought at this point, given some of the traffic that's coming, just take your time on it, say anything.
And I would just thank the, uh, town for the support and selectmen and all this project and, uh, appreciate it. And I've made commitments and I will live by them.
And, and we have, I mean, myself especially, you know, we're cognizant of the concerns and I think that everything's being done to try and, and I'd say of the five things you've had, we have no complaints. And not, not, I'm not looking for someone to generate complaints, but everything that I can see, read, reported back, that you're living within not only what you're legally allowed to do, but what you've said you do. So we appreciate that. Just keep it that way. Did you have, I could see it.
Oh, no, I, I had a talk with Chief Grant this week, and he said that he, that, that you were abiding and making sure there was crowd control and, and that, um...
When I operated in the special permit, we're keeping the conditions of the special permit intact.
Right, right. So...
Okay. Anybody else?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. Thanks for coming in. Thank you. We already approved approved for one day. We already approved that. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna jump to item eleven, which is approval of a letter from MAT, and then we're gonna just, we're gonna defer on eleven, twelve. Boards of committees, we have a motion for us to appoint Paige Abalito to sit on our, it's a reappointment to retirement board. If I could get a motion in a second on that.
I move to appoint Paige Abalito to serve through August thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thirteen boards...
Oh, Mr. Chairman, before we go forward on thirteen, could, could I just add, before we go on the, on the motion, could I ask how many applications we had come in on this?
Uh, three.
Three? Okay.
You're good?
Can I?
Go ahead.
May I ask why you asked?
I, I just wanted to, I wanted to, I wanted to know if we had more than the two that are, the two that are being proposed. Um, so, so now I do. And I'm, I'm ready to vote, Mr. Chairman.
I'll take a motion.
I move to appoint two residents to the Traffic Mitigation Committee for a term of one year. Jeffrey B. Mullin of Six Field Stone Lane and Tracy Dyke Redmond of Nine Ellsworth Road.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I do wanna say, I wanna thank, I know there was one applicant that came through me, and I thank that resident for putting an application forward, even though they weren't selected this time, maybe next time. Okay. Mr. Denny, item fourteen.
Uh, I think the only thing pressing before we had the town meeting is early voting started today at the Blue Conference Room. When I left Town Hall, over a hundred and forty people had cast their ballot for the November sixth state elections, which is very comparable to two thousand and sixteen, when it was also a presidential election. So, good numbers. The clerk and her staff are working diligently, the volunteers, Kevin Sorji and that group that was down there today. Appreciate their work downstairs and look forward to the numbers growing each and every day. So for those that don't know, early voting started today. It runs through Friday, November second. Town Hall, eight to five, Monday to Thursday. And Fridays are eight to one-thirty, and there are some extended hours that I will get back to on. There are three days, but one's a Saturday, I believe it's the twenty-seventh this week. And then the Thursday, the first, we're gonna stay open late till nine PM, I believe. And the third date, it might be the twenty-ninth, next Monday, we're gonna stay open late. But plenty of opportunity for those that would like to cast their vote for the state elections early.
Okay. Okay. Just quick, I, I wanna say thank you again to Billy O'Donnell, the registrar, for coming in last week and holding his hours here. Residents, you don't realize it till you see how many people pour through the door to see him. Um, and that's it. I'm just gonna go so we can get in there. Anybody else? Michael? Katie, Tony, do you have anything?
I don't.
Nothing. Anything on future agenda items before we go in tonight?
One question. If we, if we are meeting tomorrow night and we don't think it'll be a long meeting, could we meet, could we meet at six-thirty or delay?
It is six-thirty.
Oh, it is thirty. Perfect.
It was only six tonight.
Perfect.
I was like, the same, though. Like six o'clock.
Okay.
Does anyone at this table wanna talk about Mike's 5K? I know some of you participated. I could not, but this board was well represented.
I saw that. Ann Steph?
Yes, thank you.
This table was well represented.
It was a great event. It was widely attended. It was a great attitude, great vibe, and it was a, you know, obviously a great cause. But, you know, I had a lot of fun and enjoyed it. And I, you know, it was great to see Jen and Tony, and unfortunately, Tony beat me by about a minute and a half, but, you know, that's the way it goes.
Congrats. Thank you. I, I supported, I just, my wife does a, a big charity concert up in Salisbury each year for victims of child abuse, and it's been scheduled for a year, and I just had to, I had to be at that. So, that's something near and dear to her, so I had to go to that. And I congratulate her on doing that. We're very done.
Melinda and I went to the fall conference of the Mass Elections Association meeting.
For the weekend.
On Saturday, we rode Devens, yeah. So it was very good. They covered social media policies.
I saw that. In fact, I was gonna ask if you had any material. It's too late now.
Yep, well, no, we'll, we'll get it to you electronically. We can get it, yeah.
Okay, great.
Yep.
What'd they do, in the Devens Conference Center?
Yes.
Did they really?
A little bit of a ride getting out.
Yeah, there's a ride, yeah. Route two. Good time to be here, though. Pretty ride.
A pretty ride. This time we're gonna ride Route two out there.
Yes, that's true.
Did you stop by any apples?
And yesterday, John Cronin, John Cronin had emailed all of us that they were having a dedication ceremony honoring Martha Curtis.
Wonderful.
At Brook Road in Canton Ave. It was very nice. It was cold standing out there, but luckily it wasn't too long. And they had a reception later at Fuller Village that I didn't go to. But, but it was, it was very nice. John Kiernan spoke, and Marvin Gordon, several people who worked with Martha Curtis over the years spoke. So it was a nice tribute.
Okay. We good? We're in recess to attend this fall town meeting?